Taking the introduction. And by way of refreshing your mind. We said that pharmacy school care is shaping the practice of pharmacy globally, all over the world. It's shaping the practice of pharmacy, both in the developed and developing countries. Also have now come to accept pharmacy as a mission of pharmacy. Now, the perspective varies between developing and developed countries and practice settings. You might see some variations here and there, but the focus is always the same. For the hospital pharmacists, it's basically a medication therapy management. And then for the community pharmacists, it is primary healthcare provider. Where medication therapy management is loading with aid promotion activities as well as distribution. But the philosophy is the same. Pharmacy School Care is clinical pharmacy without boundaries. So whether we are in the hospital, in the community, or even practicing it at home, on the street, anywhere, is the same philosophy that we are using. Now, it is important for us to always be having the pharmacy school care process at our fingertips. Because everything will be doing under medication therapy management. You have to apply this pharmacy school care process. So the first thing is to initiate professional relationship. Now, how does this start? Maybe a patient presents a prescription for refill. A patient requests OTC medication. My patient presents signs and symptoms and seeks first-line intervention from the pharmacist. That is an opportunity to initiate a professional or therapeutic relationship. Then we need to gather information, data, as the case may be, subjective data, which include patient complaints and symptoms, objective data from medication profile, vital signs, physical assessments, points of care test, which we can perform even in the community pharmacy, or laboratory tests where we get the results to support our decisions. Now, the next step is to evaluate the data to identify health and drug therapy problems. And these are patient complaints, which are many good to pharmacist interventions. Because we know that these drug therapy problems are potential and some are actual. The potential ones, we are afraid that they may occur. And the actual ones are indeed already manifesting in the patients. Which, so because they are already manifesting, they're form priority in our intervention. Next step is to develop and implement care plans. These are the interventions. Which could be patient-focused interventions dealing with lifestyle management, which we can encapsulate under aid promotion. Or drug-focused intervention in the area of medication therapy management and then referral. And the other step is monitoring and evaluation. What are we monitoring? We are monitoring medications effectiveness. We are also monitoring for drug therapy problems such as adverse drug reactions or adherence issues. Then, having monitored, we need to evaluate the outcome against economic, clinical, and humanistic targets. And finally, the documentation, which runs all through the steps or the stages of the pharmacy school care process. And this documentation provides evidence for what has been done and also enables continuity of care process. Now, the pharmacy school care has been reduced into two broad components. One is managing therapy and the other component is communication with patients, communication with other healthcare providers, communication with patient caregivers, and so on. And for each of these two broad components, whether we are managing therapy or we are communicating, each one requires some skills that can enable us to achieve the goals. Now, the pharmacy school care philosophy for medication therapy management is the same four components. The social needs, which is actually, what is the social need for medication therapy management? And we take it from the burden of drug therapy problems. And this is just a typical illustration of 1.5 million preventable adverse drug events. And when they quantify, this is per annum in the US, and then $177 billion. Per annum, cost of mobility and mortality arising from drug therapy or medication therapy problems. Then the patient-centered care. The patient-centered care is looking at the patient as the king. The patient is the king, the king patient. So what do we do to treat the patient as a king? Who is at the center of all the activities? That means we have to be responsive to the needs of the patient. We have to be respectful to the patient. And then attend to the preferences in terms of the needs and values of the patient. Then the third component is caring. And what are we caring for? We are caring for medication-related needs of the patient. And in the healthcare context, caring means something specific. And there are three steps in caring. The first is to identify needs of the patient. The second is to get resources towards meeting those needs. And then the third one is follow-up evaluation. To determine if what was done to the patient was beneficial or not. Then, what is the pharmacist's responsibility? We have got it from the philosophy that the responsibility is to identify issue and actual drug therapy or medication-related problems to prevent them and then to resolve the problems we are there for. Now, patient expectations, drug-related needs and drug therapy problems or medication-related problems. Patient expectations from understanding, we have two emergent drug-related needs, i.e. untreated indication and then appropriate indication. And from here, two drug therapy problems arise. Additional drug therapy problem, where the patient has need for medication, but is not receiving any medication. Then unnecessary drug therapy problem, where the patient has needs for medication, but is receiving medications that are not necessary, that are not needed. Given the conditions of the patient. The patient also has another expectation. What does the patient expect? The patient has an expectation. And the corresponding drug-related need is effectiveness. The patient wants the medication to work. Yeah, because when we give medications to patients, it is a clinical trial. Because the patients you are giving the medication, we are not the patients you use when we are doing the clinical trial. So that is why the efficacy of medications upon which the medications are licensed for use during clinical trial is more or less a promise of what the medication is capable of doing. But in the real world, we now monitor the effectiveness of the medication. And so we have this expectation that the medication will be effective. And if the medication is not effective, then a drug therapy problem. Two drug therapy problems will arise. The first one is probably the drug was wrong. Wasn't the appropriate drug for the condition. Yeah, better medications that could have been used. And then another possibility is that the dosage may be too low. So if the patient is not taking enough of the medication, it's not likely to get the expected benefits. Then concern, that's another patient expectation, and the drug-related need is safety. The patients are concerned about the safety of the medications they use. So two drug therapy problems arise from safety, adverse drug reaction, and then the dosage may be too high to be safe. And finally, patient behavior. The need is adherence, because if the right medication has been given to the patient and the patient does not adhere to the medication, then a drug therapy problem will arise. And that is non-adherence or inappropriate adherence. Now, what is medication therapy management? Having laid the foundation for medication therapy management, and we now look at what is it? Now, 11 American pharmacy organizations in July 2004 developed a consensus definition of medication therapy management. And they defined it as distinct service or group of services that optimize therapeutic outcomes for individual patients that are independent of or cannot call in conjunction with the product. What is saying here is that medication therapy management can actually occur without dispensing product to the patient. So you can be talking to the patient without giving a physical drug product. Also, medication therapy management can occur along with the dispensing process. But we have to be clear to us that medication therapy management can actually be done independent of prescription, so it can be a service on this book. So medication therapy management is a service or group of services built on the philosophy of pharmacy book care. That's it. The service or services are built on the philosophy of pharmacy school care. And that is why we had to spend some minutes to look at this pharmacy school care process and the philosophy. Now, you recall that the philosophy of pharmacy school care affects the way pharmacists think and the way they articulate on patients. And so then I have a patient who is taking medication. You have to now improve the philosophy to be able to, you know, attend to them. Now, medication therapy management is the how of how pharmacy school care is practiced. That's it. It is the how. It's a strategy. It's a function of pharmacy school care. It's a program, like where I started in the US, started as a program. Medication therapy management is a program that answers reimbursement. And of course, in the US, they have some conditions. We talked about the definition in 2004. And then, as the years rolled by, you know, they began to modify what the program could consist of. Like up to 2020, because it is a reimbursed program, there's payment for it. So those who will benefit are those who have three out of five of the following conditions. So they listed some disease conditions that qualify for medication therapy management. So in our own setting, it's up to us to look at the disease burden and see those ones, especially where chronic diseases, patient receiving multiple drug therapy, and so on. So they can, you know, qualify because patients would have to take the medications on a continuous basis for a long period of time, and in some cases for life. And so that means that problems arise because of using the medications. So there are also intercurrent accommodic conditions. So you need to manage them to optimize the goals of therapy. So these are some of the conditions, congestive heart failure, rheumatoid arthritis, diabetes, dyslipidemia, and asthma. Sure, some of these conditions apply to us. Rheumatoid arthritis, yeah, the burden is high, congestive heart failure, diabetes, dyslipidemia, asthma. Maybe we should also add hypertension. Now, the annual cost ratio in 2017 was $3,919. And by 2018, the annual cost ratio for eight patients on this program rose to $3,967. Now, the medication therapy management in pharmacy school care contextual framework. Now, we identify. What do we identify and who? And that is the pharmacist. The philosophy, the why pharmacy school care philosophy. And here, there is, you know, one of the key features of pharmacy school care is interprofessional collaboration. So medication therapy management, of course, within that framework of interprofessional collaboration. Because when patients have been managed with drug therapy, not only one profession is involved. Then the strategy, which is the how, the strategy here has medication therapy management. And then the behaviors, what? These are some of the behaviors. They include patient counseling, medication therapy review, motivational interview, patient assessment, disease management, patient education, documentation, and follow-up. And then the context, the context or the setting, where and when? Medication therapy management can take place in the community. It can take place in the hospital setting, in fact, anywhere, anywhere the patient is. And you recall, we say that pharmacy school care does not depend on practice setting. Doesn't depend on whether you are practicing in the hospital or you are in the community. Okay, or even home care. So it can be anywhere. Anywhere there is a patient that is taking medication on a long-term basis, then that is the context where medication therapy management service could be rendered. Now, there are five core elements of medication therapy management. They are medication therapy review, personal medication record, medication-related action plan, intervention and or referral, documentation and follow-up. These are the five core components. Later on, we see the other services which could be rendered in the course of medication therapy management. Now, medication therapy review, what is it? It is a systematic process of collecting patient-specific information, assessing the medication therapies, identifying medication-related problems. Okay, because you now look at patient information and look at the medications and then begin to ask yourself questions, you know, for every problem, is there a medication? If there is no medication, is there a lifestyle modification that is managing the problem? So, and is every medication managing the problem? The other way, is every problem being managed with or without medication? So when we do that, we identify problems. And so we need to develop a prioritized list of medication-related problems. Because you see, many, several problems should be identified in the course of doing medication therapy. So these problems, these are the drug therapy problems or medication-related problems. Some of them we know will be actual problems, some will be potential problems. And well, in terms of priority, actual problems have priority over potential problems. But even when the actual problems do occur, in terms of severity, then all of them don't have the same level of severity. And so there are some problems that we can say, let us solve these problems now. Because of their severity, or maybe they can say, those that are not severe, not of immediate patient concern, they are not life-threatening, maybe we can defer them. So we need to prioritize. After that, we now need to create a plan to resolve the problems, and that's the care plan or the intervention. Now, medication therapy review is of two types. You have comprehensive and you have targeted medication therapy. What is comprehensive medication therapy? Ideally, the patient presents all current medications to the pharmacist, including all prescription and non-prescription medications, herbal products, and other dietary supplements. Then the pharmacist then assesses the patient's medications and look at the presence of medication or drug therapy problems. Adherence, drug interaction, dosage, too low or too high, inappropriate indication, and things like that. Then works with the patient, the physician, and other healthcare professionals to determine appropriate options for resolving identified problems. Because medication therapy review, which is core element or the medication therapy management, you know, it requires collaborative effort. So in some cases, yes, the pharmacist works directly with the patient. In some cases, he has to work in collaboration with primary care, either the physician or the nurse, as the case may be. In addition, the pharmacy supplies the patient with education and information to improve the patient's self-management of their medications. Now, targeted medication therapy reviews are used to address an actual or potential medication-related problem. You know, this time we have already identified some specific problems. So the medication therapy review is not targeted, unlike the, you know, comprehensive ones. So you are now focused on a particular problem and trying to get a solution for that problem. Whether for a new problem or subsequent monitoring, the pharmacist assesses the specific therapy problem. Looking at the patient's complete patient medical history, medication history, and other patient-specific factors. And following assessment, the pharmacist intervenes, you know, maybe providing education, information, or, you know, getting in touch with the physician. If it entails a change in the medication, because the physician in this case is the, if he's the prescriber, then you have to work with him to take the necessary modifications as appropriate. But you require evidence to show that your recommendation is supported by literature. The next component is personal medication record, which is a comprehensive record of the patient's medications, prescription medications, non-prescription medications, herbal products, and dietary products. Whatever the patient is taking, you have to, you know, have them, have a record of all the technologies that the, when I mean technology, I'm referring to what the patient is using, you know, to treat the condition. They are all healthcare technologies. Now, this is an illustration of patient medication record. Semi-record, you have the name of the patient, the date of bed. You know, date of bed is better than saying the age. If you say age, people can make wrong calculation. But if you say date of bed, then you can have the right calculation. So you have the drug, the name, the dose, take for, what is the purpose? When do I take it? Name dose, morning, afternoon, evening, bedtime. Start date, stop date, the physician, the specialty, and if you have any special instructions. So you do this for all the prescription medications, all the non-prescription medications, all the herbal supplements, and so on, that the patient is using. You have to put all of them in the record so that the patient has a comprehensive record of all the medications they are taking. Now, comprehensive personal medication record should actually include the following. There may be more. You look at your need and see any of them items that could be dropped or item that could be included. For the patient name, patient, date of bed, phone number, emergency contact information, name, relationship, phone number, primary care physician, the name and the phone number, the pharmacy, pharmacist name and phone number, allergies, other medication-related problems, potential questions for patients to ask about their medications, date last updated, date last reviewed by the pharmacist, patient signature and pharmacist signature. And for each medication that we are putting on the database on the record, we need to know the medication, the drug name, and what it is used for, indication, take for how long, instructions, special instructions, start date, stop date, prescriber, contact information, and any special instructions. After that, we move to the next core element, medication-related action plan, which is a patient-centric document containing list of actions for the patient to use in tracking progress for their self-management. You see, because health is a personal responsibility, the role of healthcare workers is to facilitate the care of the patient. You know, apart from when you are detecting a patient and putting the patient under what we call admission and maybe forcing medications on the patients, the moment the patients leave the facility, they begin to ambulate. So they determine whether to take your medications or not. So, you know, their role, active involvement in their management is very important. That's why we say health is a personal responsibility. We only try to encourage patients to see the needs to take their medications. So, and the action plan. What does it contain? Patient's name, the pharmacy of pharmacist, pharmacy name, pharmacist's name and phone number, date of medication-related action plan creation, the date you prepared it, action steps for the patient, what the patient needs to do, and notes for the patient, what I did and when I did it, this is now the patient report or feedback. Appointment for follow-up. This is a typical example of medication-related action plan. My medication-related action plan. You see, the other one we said, my medication record. Mine, that's possessive. So the patient knows that this is mine, it's for me. Mine, that's possessive. So the patient knows that this is mine, it's for me. Name of patient, doctor and phone, pharmacist. Pharmacy and phone number, date prepared, and then you have um the list. You have action steps, what I need to do, knows what I did and when. You, you know, list that. You can keep expanding uh this uh form. If you have more information and of course you have my next appointment with my pharmacist, you have them to identify dates. Now, the intervention and or referral. The pharmacist provides consultative services and interventions to address the medication-related problems of the patient. And when necessary, the pharmacy refers the patient to uh the physician or the other healthcare providers. And these are some typical examples. Maybe there is a potential problem discovered during the medication therapy review. That may require evaluation and diagnosis. So, the first patient that to the physician. Disease management education as in chronic disease uh uh management, like diabetes uh educator. Patient will benefit from a diabetes educator. Or monitoring for high-risk medications such as warfarin, denazone, metotresiv. Or referring the patient to a physiotherapist if physiotherapy is what is needed. Documentation and follow-up. Medication therapy management services are documented in a consistent manner. Follow-up medication therapy management is scheduled based on the patient's medication-related needs. Because it is the need of the patient that determines uh what next step to be taken. Or if the patient is transitioning, moving from one facility to the other, or moving from a hospital. Care to uh uh outpatient care and of course from men. After admission, the patient goes, becomes a community winner. So you can have that arrangement. The patients that are discharged from the hospital. They leave the services in the hospital pharmacy, then is there a way of continuing with the community pharmacy? In the neighborhood where they live. Documentation is an essential element of medication therapy management service model. And the pharmacist documents services and interventions, both the services and the outcome. You know, performed in a manner appropriate for evaluating patient progress and sufficient for billing purposes. For those who, like I said, medication therapy management is a paid program, is a robust program in the US. So uh part of the protocol is for you to determine. There are some requirements for billing purposes, so you have to, you know, fulfill those requirements. Now, these are some documentation elements for the patient record. They may include, but not limited to the following. Patient demographics, basic information, address, phone, email, gender, age, ethnicity, education. Patient's special needs, health plan, benefit, insurance, coverage. Yes, now we have uh health insurance. In fact, a program like medication therapy management that will lower the cost of the insurance. Um. I think it will be easier for patients who have uh insurance, those who have been insured. Uh why it is easy is that uh they have providers. So they have facilities where they visit, so that it is possible for you to uh follow up. But where the patient has to visit the next nearest facility anytime they wish, then you have that fragmentation. So that can be some challenge in terms of implementation. Subjective observations, pertinent patient-reported information. Previous medical history, family history, social history, chief complaints, allergies, previous adverse drug reactions. Objective observations, known allergies, diseases, conditions, laboratory results, vital signs. Physical examination results, review of the system, these are all the objective. And assessments, the problem list, assessments on medication-related problems. The plan to uh uh solve the problems identified. A care plan is the healthcare professional's course of action in helping the patient. So the intervention is a care plan. Education, goal setting and instruction provided to the patient for verification of understanding. Collaboration. We need to also document that communication with other healthcare professionals. Recommendations, referral, correspondence with other professionals. So cover letter, soap notes, all these uh records. Then the uh patient medical record. Record of all the uh medication record, record of all the medications, prescription, non-prescription. Herbal products, dietary supplements, then all that. Then medication and action plan. Patient-centric document containing actions to track the progress for their self-management. Then follow-up, transition plan of scheduling of next follow-up visits. Then of course the billing, where this applies, amount of time spent on patient care, level of complexity among child. Um. These are some of the areas now we need to begin to address. You know, when we are attending to a patient, the time it takes you to attend to one patient. It varies based on the complexity of the problem, you know, that the patient presents. Can we begin to look at how much time it takes us to attend to a patient? So look at the problem, look at what you did and the time. And I think this is really easy. Uh for us to do some kind of a study, to see the time it takes us to attend to one patient. And so if you're doing only dispensing, the time you spend would be different from the time spent. When one is providing medication therapy management to the patient. Now, this is a medication therapy management core elements of this model. Uh. So what we have here, you start with the first step. Interview patient and create database with patient information. Next, you review medications for indication effectiveness, safety and adherence. From there, you list medication-related problems and prioritize them, then you create a plan. And when you create a plan, you now need to implement. Now you look at this, intervention directly with the patient. Yes, these are problems that you deal with directly with the patient. And we know that if it is a no-ticing medication. If, if it is a no-ticing medication, uh it's with the patient directly. If it is a lifestyle change. You also deal with the patient directly, and this is what we call a patient-focused intervention. But if it is a prescription medication, so it has to be done in collaboration. So that is where intervention via collaboration. Physician and other healthcare professionals. And after implementation, you have to create, you create a plan, you communicate. You also create, you communicate depending on uh who. And then from the outcome, the patient assessment measures of outcomes. If the treatment goal is made, that's fine. But if the goal is not made, you go back, that's uh you start the process again. These are other medication therapy management-related services, medication reconciliation. I had to bring up medication uh uh reconciliation. Some might feel it is a part of the review, but I will see the reason why I put it out. Pharmacotherapy consults, disease management coach or support, pharmacogenomic applications. Anti-coag- coagulation management, medication safety and then health promotion. So yes, medication reconciliation. I say we have huge opportunity here because of easy access to medicines and poverty. Patients often keep a basket full of unused medicines for future use. Or even share these medicines with family members and friends. So we should encourage patients to bring all their old medications for reconciliation. Or. And I'm saying that when you do this, we have to be professional and non-judgmental. You know, if you become judgmental, begin to query, then why did you do this? Why did you not do that? Uh though we told you information. But don't be judgmental, don't begin to query, then why have you done so much? Did you know this will hurt you? This is wrong, that is wrong, no, non-judgmental and have to be professional. Because, you know, uh the patient, if the patient perceived that uh maybe this guy wants to collect these medications. And uh when I'm going back, he doesn't give me all my medications, that's a problem. If the patient understands why, oh, look at this one, it is expired. That's why I'm not giving it back to you, I have to dispose it. And that's why I'm saying some of the things we can do is medication education. Regarding labeling, you see our patients in this environment, they keep a basket full of unlabeled medications. So in the course of reconciliation, we can help them, the ones we know what they are, you identify them and label them. Uh because it is not good to keep unlabeled medications. Storage of leftover medications, duplications, expiration and then disposal. You know, do they know what to do with expired medications? Do they know how to dispose expired medications? And so we can retrieve this one and uh help to process them through proper uh disposal methods. Then another important area I want pharmacists to pay attention is education on duration of medication. And now these are key, three key areas, acute through short-term use or acute through acute infections or conditions. So the duration can be shortened if it's an acute problem. Our chronic use of medications, so which medications would be for chronic use? Which medications would be for PRN when required? So these are the three classes we have identified. Of all the drugs we are giving to the patients, which ones are for short-term use, which ones are for long-term use? I E, you're treating a high blood pressure, we know that the treatment is for life. So we don't need to give them impression that after these uh dos, that the hypertension is cured. And which of the medications in the basket should be when required, PRN use. Otherwise, when the patients have all these medications, uh you see them trying to. Those who think they are complying, they want to finish everything. So let us use this classification to guide them. This one is for short term, this is for long term and this is as required. Then pharmacotherapy consults. Here, it may happen as a referral from other healthcare providers or from other pharmacists. Usually reserved for more complicated patient cases, specifically patients who have complacency, group conditions. And who, you know, we have identified potential or actual uh medication-related problem. I know this is already happening among clinical pharmacists in Nigeria, already doing. Pharmacists providing these services typically have uh an advanced training, expertise. Or people who are specialized in, in certain areas. Now, disease management coach or support to who? To patients. Supporting self-management. There are programs that integrate the patient into uh disease state management group support program. That empower them to manage their disease and medications. And it tells you earlier that uh health is a personal responsibility, you know. So most cases, the patients have to be empowered, you know, to help to follow up when we are the professional care stops. And this is known to reduce healthcare costs and improve quality of life of patients. You have some diverse disease management programs that incorporate effective medication management. Which have been developed for a variety of uh disease conditions. Uh including diabetes, asthma, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, heart failure. Parkinson's disease, Alzheimer's disease, depression, among others. Pharmacogenetic application of medication therapy management. The goal of pharmacogenomics is to produce personalized medicines based on genetic data or genetic markers. So when we use personalized medicines, you have maximum effectiveness and minimum adverse effects on patients. Then another area is anti-coagulation management. And there are two key functions, yeah, in education and monitoring for high-risk patients. And high-risk medications. High-risk patients such as those who have a atrial fibrillation, they are at risk of stroke. So, and then that is why we want to give them uh some medications. Anti-coagulation prophylaxis. And one of the medications used uh is a warfarin. Again, warfarin is a high-risk medication because of the risk of bleeding. Or you know, you have uh antiplatelets, antiplatelets like a low-dose aspirin. Or clouvidigre. And then, of course, these ones are used uh in uh families. Many of them are using this, but um warfarin, which is more effective. You can only use this where you have a professional care. Medication safety surveillance is another. Service, medication therapy management service. Here, the goal is to prevent medication errors and advance events. And also we do data collection and reporting, such as use of NAPDAC yellow forms. Then health promotion. Now, health promotion is an increasing component of a mass okay. So when you are doing medication therapy management, health promotion is a component of it. Because when you're managing therapy of patients, you're either managing the patient with uh medications. Or you're managing with a lifestyle modification. So patient-focused intervention that must support pharmacotherapy, that's uh highlighted support. Patients are never treated with any medications. There must be lifestyle modifications that go with the med- medications. Other health promotion activities, screening, point-of-care testing. Health education support for hypertension, diabetes, asthma, cancers, nutritional education and so on. Then immunization, which is also part of uh health promotion. The role here could be pharmacists then advocacy role or being vaccine administrator, you know. Uh where the service meets. And the whole lesson is to improve access. First, you know, in the US now, we got the fifty states. Pharmacists, community pharmacists. Licensed to administer these vaccines. Now, medication therapy management skills. Now, this starts in a hierarchy, knowing what to do, knowing how to do it, demonstrating how to do it. demonstrating how to do it, having the right attitude to do it and doing it on a consistent basis. And that is what makes it a practice, you know, not just a one-off thing. We begin, we do it on a consistent basis, it is part of the practice. Now, these skills you require, I've identified some skills, pharmacotherapeutic skills. And for you to do this, you need to get familiar with standard treatment guidelines for various disease states. That can help. Communication skills, questioning skills, listening skills, empathy skills, documentation skills. The physical assessment skills of inspection, precaution, perfection and coordination. Critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills. You see, uh, for you to be a problem solver, you must be a critical thinker. So we require critical thinking skills so that for each problem, we begin to look at options. A critical thinker doesn't say this is a problem, this is solution. A critical thinker says this is a problem, these are the possible solutions. So now from the possible solutions, you can pick the best. And if the best fails, what is the next best option? Getting started. There are three reducible requirements for medication therapy management. As we have the practitioner, the patient and the documentation system. Practitioner, who has the knowledge, the attitudes, the skills and the behavior. And the patient could be institutional patient, it could be a cognitive welling patient. Then documentation system for medication therapy management, the manual or electronic, by combination of both. Then preparation, what do we do to get started? We start with preparation, improve your knowledge, attitude and the combination. And adopt, I want to do spirits because, I mean, if you look at all what we have said now, this is just pharmaceutical care we're talking about. Bringing it as a program, which is what they did in the U S, in Canada, the U K. Just a program they are using to market pharmaceutical care. So identify the elements of medication therapy management to start with. You look at the environment, your practice, look at, uh, the needs. And then you say, okay, maybe we'll start with, uh, start this one, two, three. You know, even if you start with one and see how it goes, then that's how you can. Scale up. Assemble the required documentation form. Pharmacocare, if it's not documented, it was normal. So we have given some examples of some forms in the course of this, uh, lecture. So these forms are not set aside, the people who developed them say you can use them as you wish. You can modify them add or remove depending on your needs. After that, we need to identify a cohort of patients to pilot a project such as medication reconciliation project. Even if we want to start a medication reconciliation for those in the community pharmacy. It's really a huge business, we can just start with that. Okay, bring all the medications you have at you. You help them to do a reconciliation. Identify the ones that have expired. Identify the duplications, those that don't have expiry date, those that don't have name, you have them to label them. Those that are not properly, uh, uh, packaged, you have them, this is the proper packaging and this is where you start. And then you can document it, you can quantify this, so that could be the starting point. Then you look and learn from pilot experience and scale up. So here I have, uh, who some further reading, a chapter on medication therapy management in the Essentials of Pharmacocare second edition. Has words lots on, uh, medication therapy management. So when you get it, you can read more details. So for the concluding remarks, um, I will say I am happy with Dr. Joseph Mado, the CIPAN chairman and his vibrant team. CIPAN has witnessed tremendous growth within a short period. And enthusiasm shown by members all over the country is amazing. I can see that Nigerian clinical pharmacies are desirous to translate theory into practice, not minding the barriers to change. The drivers for change in pharmacy practice include education, technology and the regulatory framework. We must celebrate milestones that we make this change in a bit. Namely, approval of doctor of pharmacy as entry to practice qualification. Secondly, creation of the consultant pharmacist candidate in twenty twenty. They are officially recognizing the fellowship of the West African Postgraduate College of Pharmacists. These milestones we achieved after several years of persistent struggle. And at times when all who, and at times when all who was literally lost. We must acknowledge that the God of pharmac- there is hope so we can face tomorrow. And change people, change things and change things to improve the society. Another potential driver for change in pharmacy practice is to adopt the philosophy of my school care, of which medication therapy management is a key function. The Association of Hospital and Administrative Pharmacists of Nigeria, under the leadership of Dr. Kinsley Ami, has already articulated a consensus document on standardized pharmaceutical practicing. The global trend in healthcare is for the professionals to specialize and collaborate on patient-centered care in order to optimize care outcomes. Pharmacy is already on the march again to realize the dream of specialization. And I must tell you that this process will be slow and painful as usual, but we should not give up. You can manage change with minimal backlash if the change is introduced gradually. In the journey to move from generalist to specialist and to subspecialist, let us work with the leaders of the profession and avoid divergent efforts. What we can do at individual and group levels is to raise champions that can fight the cost of pharmacy in a consistent way. Finally, I must thank the education committee of CIPAN for giving me the speaking spot this evening. Long live CIPAN, long live P S N, long live Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, we really appreciate this wonderful presentation, Professor Sir. We appreciate this presentation, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, we really appreciate it, thank you so much. CIPAN wants to use this opportunity to also appreciate you and this wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Also been preaching this. So we thank you so much for this. At this point, we are going to be from, 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 from. And, uh, to do this, we want to employ our members that they can always indicate by. To avoid the background noise. Welcome comments, we welcome, um, uh, questions also.
Yeah, can be questions, it can be comments, you know.
Yeah, I think point, um, is. At our session now, Chairman Doctor, Doctor Mado Joseph. Doctor Mado Joseph, we just.
Hello, good evening, Doctor Timmy, can you hear me?
Also say something, thank you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, the, the statement is not, or the voice, the sound is not so clear here. But, um, I don't.
Yes, loud and clear, sir, you can talk.
Alright, I don't even know how to say it. I don't even express it, the way I feel this night. Uh, the way Professor Okpara has presented, I think he deserves standing ovation as, as we are in a hall. But are we, we are giving it to him sexually, this is more than excellent. So happy, we are so highly honored for your coming to give us this, enriching our knowledge this night. I think all I was hoping to say is to, to talk to our members or to clinical pharmacists all over this country. Um, it is not easy and I do see people, uh, if you see someone that leads very well, a good leader, it depends on those who are surrounding. For us in CIPAN, we have our mission and vision, we need every hand to deck. We are pleading to all of us this night to take so much more commitment, we know that long time, not want to establish structures. And we believe by this time we establish that, won't be working so much and then we can go. Uh, many people are looking towards, I can tell you sometimes I feel surprised. Maybe taking a bit much long time to see this. But I see patients coming to me and they will just bring all their physicians also. And they say, no, I was giving this, I was giving this and I said, most of the pharmacist, you know what and what I can take. And I also do tell our colleagues, some of my clients, yes, some of my clients, even physicians. And this is not to exaggerate things. This is to say that if we, we really, if we are really doing what we are supposed to do. Our profession has a lot of dignity that can be restored, especially through clinical pharmacy. Clinical pharmacy is the way forward, it is the solution, it is the hope of our profession. Otherwise, even robots will take over our job because robots can cancel and robots can dispense, but robots cannot do medication therapy management. Robots cannot offer pharmaceutical care. And there are many people who want to, these days, but are we ready? We are ready, yes, we move ahead. Professor Okpara has acknowledged so much this night, I've learnt a lot too. And I've been thinking in so many directions, but then I know that, um, maybe I would just. I know that, uh, our prof was talking about medication reconciliation. I believe it's not all about maybe telling people to bring their drugs into community pharmacy. Even in the hospital, even at the hospital bedside, you do medication therapy and medication reconciliation. You match the drugs against the disease conditions being treated. If, for example, there is need additional drug or there is, there are, uh, condition not being treated, it is still part of the reconciliation. And this is because when our colleagues said, that, uh, what are you going to do there? But if you do that sort of thing, people will say that you're not taking over any person's job. But rather, offering a lot, people will be looking to what, but. Then we, I didn't want, I want this too. Please, pardon me for taking much of your time, but for example, do my practice. If you come to my pharmacy, whoever comes to my pharmacy, a community pharmacy, as my, as people say. If you come to my pharmacy and you want to consult, we must do all the vital side, most of the necessary one. We must check your weight, we must check your height, we must check your B M I and check make you wait for your eyes. And so, and so then we check your, before we even do anything. And I doubt if we all do this, nobody will say that pharmacist. I think this is the little that I may pushing as a comment. Thank you so much for your time, God bless.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Doctor, Doctor Mado Joseph. At this point, I hand over to Doctor, Doctor Raymond Okechuko. Please, can you unmute yourself and then continue the motivation, please? Doctor Raymond Okechuko.
Yeah.
Unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Okay, let me apologize for the late joining because of the signal issues I have here. I listened to the program, even I had to go to the YouTube to listen and, uh, I cannot be impressed any less. Thank you very much, Professor. We are proud of you. Uh, it is now time for us to, um, bring in our comments, our questions, some of them may type it at the question and answer or even at the chat forums, so we can look, look at them. If you want to speak, you can raise your hand, so we recognize you and they move from there. But I'll make it, uh, even Richard and Provost started it.
There's some hands up and there's some comments for us again, so then check on the. Check the hands up, that you already hear me.
Thank you very much. Doctor Richarlison, are you there?
No, no, Chooks.
Doctor Chooks, can we, can we hear you? Okay, if it's not ready, can we take, uh, Doctor Alfonso's Peter?
I think they are muted.
Oh, they're gonna mute now, they're pretty much muted, they're pretty much muted.
Okay. Okay, Doctor, Doctor Richard Richards, are you ready? Okay, can we, Doctor Felicia Williams, you're raising your hand, let's, uh, you have to unmute yourself, yes.
I've done that, sir, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
It's nice hearing from you, Prof.
Thank you.
We really appreciate the presentation. When MTN came on board, a lot of people were confused, what is the relationship between MTN and Pharmacocare? But this is, you have, you have dissected the whole thing that the confusion and the misgivings have been removed. Actually, as pharmacists, anywhere we are.
You are muted again, unmute yourself, Doctor Felicia. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, it's okay, nice, good.
Irrespective of where we practice as pharmacies, MTN has come to stay. Like even those that are not in the clinical pharmacy practice, those in pharmacy, those in pharmacy, even in the industry. Products can be formulated with the patient in mind, so that MTN can also be practiced. In academics too, we can teach our students irrespective of department we belong to, so that MTN can be practiced. For instance, those in um, our school microbiology, how has antibiotics been used? What are the effects on the patient? How can my use of antimicrobial? So irrespective of where our practices are as or practice setting as pharmacist, MTN has come to stay. And it's one good way of establishing ourselves as pharmacist, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, hello, can we hear me now?
Yes, you can hear you, that was us, yes.
Okay, uh, good evening, Prof.
Good evening, Peter.
We appreciate you for this wonderful presentation. And just to let you know again that we are so happy that you have been one of the pioneers of clinical pharmacy. I cannot remember how many of your books, apart from the fact that I was one of those that spread your books in Canada those days, how many people have bought your books for? Just to make them understand what clinical pharmacy is all about. Now, with respect to medication therapy management, I was fortunate to shadow medication therapy management in Canada, Edmonton.
Oh, great.
And like you had said, it's easier for them because it is recognized by law.
Yes.
The insurance companies in Alberta actually pay pharmacists for these services. You know, so they have certain services including tobacco cessation, which is included under the medication therapy management. You know, disease management consults, pharmacotherapy consults. In fact, they have what they call their inclusion criteria. For them, they are able to align maybe two chronic diseases or more.
Yes.
You know, to align the pharmacist into the service so that it it's easy for them to implement. Now, with respect to Nigeria, a few of us have actually been putting a lot of personal efforts. But unfortunately, just like you have said, that it will be slow, it will be slow and it mean not be easy. Most pharmacists get discouraged by that and the attitudes we have towards practice. A lot of pharmacies are so equipped intellectually, that I bet you, just like you have stated. Those five points you give for implementing medication therapy management, the education is not enough. You need to have the positive attitude, you can do attitude and actually go to do it. A lot of pharmacies have issues with doing it for the first time. So I know it will help us if we are able to work along with people that are already doing. Practicing elements of medication therapy management to actually get it started. A lot of pharmacies, you know, want to do it, but they have not done it before and they haven't seen people that have done it. You know, I visit most community pharmacy anytime I'm chance as a way of intervening. And making the pharmacies to buy into the idea of medication therapy management. So I know this presentation is going to open our eyes and it's going to actually make a lot of people, especially the academia, to actually embrace. That the time has come for pharmacists to actually key into medication therapy management. Most of the time when I present myself and I make contributions, I usually put medication therapy manager pharmacist by my name, just from what you have said. Medication reconciliation is one aspect, you know. Several issues you brought in there are actually elements of medication therapy management. So some pharmacists have been doing medication therapy management without even knowing that that is what they are doing. So we hope that by virtue of this presentation tonight, a lot of us would benefit and would go beyond just our words to practice. However, however, again, I want to implore that most of the senior colleagues, especially those in the hospital centers. Allow younger professionals. To get involved in clinical practice and medication therapy management, what am I talking about? There are young pharmacists with FAMD, with fellowship that have been posted to go and work in the store. I wouldn't know how those ones who practice medication therapy management when they are in the box store and they don't have access to patients. That is the struggle for within that I want, especially those of you in the academics, to solicit the support of people in the uh NAPN. And those that actually come to run this program, some people just want the certificate and that is our biggest challenge in pharmacy practice. And until we do it, until we say something, until we allow people to practice their passion, we are not going to go anywhere. Once again, we will thank Prof for this presentation and I hope that today is going to be a turning point to matching. Uh, the difference between the classroom and what we hope to practice and what we hope to achieve, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
So we have a. Doctor Solomon, you answer your. The dead of Pious, you can unmute some, ask a question.
Can you, yeah, on now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead, yes.
Okay, I want to, yeah, I want to thank Prof for that presentation and I'm very like very delighted. Part of what I wanted to say or even ask was alluded to by Doctor Alfonso Spita. I have a brief question for Prof. Uh, my first question is that, like if we comparison with, we got problem to insurance payment and reimbursement. For M services to pharmacists like, like we have in Canada, in the US, for example. So it got me thinking, like maybe those pharmacists in the hospital in Nigeria may be able to incorporate MTN quite easily. Because if they have sufficient hands, uh, one person can be, you know, uh, session to do that. But so I was thinking about the community pharmacies in Nigeria and the challenge that they will have. But it's gonna be a lot of, you're gonna need a lot of being voluntary and and I'm thinking what? How people in the community service, community practice be motivated, what is incentive for them to take time? And patient are reconcile and do MTN, that is my first question. And I just think, how can we make this uh thing, how can we Nigerianize this thing in our, in our practice? So that we can benefit and the patient too can be benefit, there has to be some incentive for the pharmacies in the community practice to do this, that's one. My second question is that, is there a way that the people in academia can design some kind of? I don't, I know, I know that PCN now does some continuing education. Uh, stuff, know if things like this can be incorporated into continuing education system. So that people who don't have skills in this area, not just know like better skill, I can learn. Or can there be some kind of short internships in different centers that are very good with MTMs, they can train more hands. And what, what does Prof think? And and the last question is, does Prof think our current FAMD curriculum as well as the BFM curriculum is well equipped? Uh, to train pharmacy, the driving the pharmacists uh to provide MTN services, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Pious, um. Let me, because your questions, there are three questions, three in one, maybe I should just take them. First, I start with the last one, you're asking whether our curriculum, BFM or FAMD is adequate with respect to MTN? Well, um. First of all, we have to really appreciate that medication therapy management is just a core component of pharmacy care. Okay, and if you look at the pharmacy care we are teaching in the universities. Uh, I'm not sure that the depth is good enough. If the depth is good enough, it would include uh people in the developed countries, they have a way of marketing their concept. Right, so then we are able to market the philosophy of my school care to practice, then after that, what next? So they were now, they started looking at programs, specific programs. So they came up with that idea of medication therapy management. In the UK, they call it medicines management, which even started before pharmacy school care. So. I think if we uh take our training on pharmacy school care more in depth and more seriously. Um, it would handle that. Then you're also talking about a continued professional development, well, you know, as new themes, as new concept emerge. That's the essence of a continued professional development. I know when we talked about my school care, the early stage, there was no emphasis on medication therapy management. And um like Peter said, yes, you read my book on pharmacy school care. The first edition of my school care textbook, we didn't have anything on medication therapy management. But now that I talked about the second edition, well detailed on medication therapy management. So these things as they evolve, as the practice models evolve, you know, you begin to incorporate them. And then you also begin to teach them to the uh, to the students. But I can tell you those who we already granted to some extent in pharmacy school care. Medication therapy management is just a brand. It's just a brand, if you look at all what it entails, from beginning even when I talked about the pharmacy school care. In those uh 2010, when I came up with the textbook. We really, we really did talk about using a reductionist approach. That pharmacy school care can be reduced into two, for those who want to understand it, those who want to practice. If you can reduce it into two components, managing therapy and communication. And nothing has changed, medication therapy management is managing therapy of patients. Now you look at your practice environment, look at the technology, so that can help you to see how to manage the, the, the therapy. But the, 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 the concept, the, the core concept has not changed. And medication therapy management in the community pharmacy, well, in the hospital, you have collaborative care, it can be done. In the community pharmacy, I think the community pharmacy has more opportunities for medication therapy management than the hospitals in Nigeria. That is what I think and I think that is the, that is the position. Now, many of these things we are talking about here, you already do them in Nigeria, but they are not being done on a consistent basis. Okay, and it's not just pharmacy, it's just the problem within country that we don't have structures. Okay, so when we have structures, we begin to define scope of practice, when you define scope of practice, who does what, when and how? So we begin to identify that this should be, the scope of pharmacy practice should include XYZ. We don't have that, so meanwhile, people just do what they think that they can. And I refer you to document by association of hospital and administrative pharmacists. Unstandardized pharmacy school care practices in Nigeria. In that document, we identified core functions of pharmaceutical care. One of the core functions identified is medication therapy management. And that's why I did say we should quickly move to adopt and begin to implement that document. I don't expect that everything will be done in a smooth, but let us start from somewhere. Let's start from somewhere, I don't expect our practice to be as clearly defined as what obtains in UK or US or in Canada. Uh, somebody talked about what happens in Alberta. Pharmacy practice, yeah, pharmacy practice in Alberta is uh, I mean, what they do in Alberta is from what they do in the Ontario. If pharmacy in Alberta, they do more.
Yes, sir.
In fact, they run mini clinics, they run clinics and so this own therapy management is key to what they are doing.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, so this is in practice, practice environment, the environment supports it. But all I'm saying is that in summary is that pharmacists in Nigeria, there is nothing they will tell you they are doing in those countries that we don't have fragments of them. But we don't, we don't have them in a consistent, in a word defined manner. Okay, yeah, oh, we start from somewhere, we start from somewhere, yeah. Um, I think, yeah, I think that should be okay for the questions, the three in one questions, so that we can take another. Yeah, thank.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Prof, can we, can we have a Doctor Fumelion?
Okay. Thank you very much, good evening, I want to thank Prof for the wonderful presentation. Well, I have two, two comments, the first one is when I was in a heart clinic. We were actually doing this medication therapy management, but we didn't know that we're actually doing it. Until I attended a workshop about two years ago. Now, when you are doing it, the doctors, the physicians, I mean, they respect you, they bring patient to you, the patient comes to you and they open up. Cause we are attending to HIV and HIV patient then, they call infected patient, you explain to them do this. Even as a teamwork day, the doctors, the officials, we invite you sometimes to their, we need to their facility room when they have problem with some patient. It's those that we need to structure it and do a body find the medication therapy management, whether in the community or in the hospital. Then secondly, I did my PhDs on health insurance and I did about two years ago when we, I did this workshop, this is the second time I'm having a. Train workshop on it and that one thing came to my mind then, you know, we wanted to be relevant. And this is health insurance and it's like they don't want to pay us capital fee, they don't want to pay us this. And I thought that when we, when we do this medication therapy management, we actually will be ready. And they, we need, we can use it to fight, I don't know the committee uh that is doing this on the national health insurance scheme. That they, they need to bring this, maybe we find to new structure it, the community pharmacists, they start doing it. Then a physician will start sending pressure to them too. Then this, the idea of the, the dispensing drugs in their facility will not be there again. The pharmacist will be able to dispense the drug, uh, cancer the patient, do medication therapy management and they will get their own capital fee. And even the hospital too, or even the pharmacy before that, if something is done, they can do it and maybe write some consultation fee for the patient to pay. It's a good thing, they are happy when you do it for them, that you see, once you do it for one patient, if another patient line up in the hospital when. Especially when I was on call there, you see the, 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 my dad, please explain to us too. Uh, or my dad, you not say anything concerning us, I know you don't. So it's very good that we, we fight on it and structure it and let everybody key to it. Actually, clinical pharmacies are be more relevant, even in health insurance, in other aspect of pharmacy. Thank you very much, once again, it's a top provoking uh presentation, sir, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
You are not on the presentation on Zoom. Use your voice for now, I saw the.
Yeah, Doctor Okachuko, Raymond, they are, they are hands up.
Thank you, thank you, Prof, Prof, before you, before you respond, hello, 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 hello. Please, may we, may we, may we uh do this? This, when you have your hand raised and you're recognized, please hold that of Q. And the line, Prof, I don't know what I.
Sorry, what did you say? Austin, you're here, man. All the way from UK, you joined us, thank you. Oh, you are muted.
Hello, Prof.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you doing there?
I'm fine, Prof, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Akoli from UK.
You have a response, can you go ahead and ask a question?
Yes, I think the, the, before this last one was just a comment, not a question.
Okay, good to meet you, sir.
So, Suleman, you're raising your hand. Yeah, Suleman, can you?
Someone, somebody.
Someone, somebody, uh, the wrong one is on. The, 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 he's on.
Okay, Comfort.
Yes.
Oh, Louis Che, okay, go ahead. Yeah, please.
Prof, I want to sincerely look forward to this very comprehensive and detailed background on the concept and implementation of M T M. I want to encourage everyone on this platform this evening. In my own institution at Amadou Bellou University Hospital. We had a breakthrough. Sometime in twenty nineteen, we started the M T M program. We actually picked it up with a pilot clinic. We run the M T M program as a clinic and intervention service. Principally conducted by pharmacists alone. We run it every Wednesdays at the Medical Outpatient Clinic. Where we have a full full date, registered about fifty five patients. We use all the core elements of running the M T M clinic that you have already highlighted for us. In addition to other related services. We took it up as a body to promote our own professional image. And also to improve treatment outcomes in our patients. We started by obtaining an ethical approval from the management to run a pilot M T M clinic. And also conduct research with the aim of providing evidence to the management for the needs to see the contributions of pharmacists in improving the quality of life of patients, in optimizing their treatment and target goals. And believe you me, it's been beautiful. But to say it started simply, it wasn't easy. To first of all, have been to educate ourselves, putting the forms together, knowing how to go about our documentation. We started by recruiting diabetic patients with one or two other comorbid conditions. We discovered that most of them, we actually are attentive, they had other cardiovascular and respiratory diseases. And it's been ongoing now for two years. Part of the data that we generated, our results from the first research in twenty nineteen, I presented it at the last Napa conference that, the Vatra conference that we have in Nenubo this year. I want to encourage us, most of the time, our problem is that inertia. You should also, I, you talked about the practitioner, the patient and the documentation.
What do you know?
I think the major problem there is actually the practitioner. As pharmacists, I think we should first of all, take up this responsibility of wanting to blow our trumpets, showcase the knowledge and the services that we can offer. In our own M T M, we do not dispense medication. And in fact, we are proposing to set up a building, an M T M clinic, pharmacist-led clinic that is going to just be standing side by side with the medical outpatient clinic. In the developing nations where M T M clinics are being run, the doctors actually send consult to pharmacists. Patients who have not optimized their treatment goals over a period of about six months to a year. We send the post to the pharmacist, that pharmacist is able to review, using the core elements of M T M, provide other patients for possible intervention, drug therapy intervention, or even referral cases. We've had to do this three, including patients in our facility. As that, yes, before yesterday, Wednesday twenty ninth, Wednesday twenty eighth, we had about fifty five patients in our clinic. We have already sent a proposal to our management to approve for us to set up an M T M clinic outside the department of pharmacists services where we are dispensing medication. We want to run it side by side. And I want to encourage us, please. I understand that remuneration is a critical part of this in the developing nations. But I don't think for now, we should be talking about remuneration. I think we should be talking about blowing our trumpets. Let them see what you can offer. Let them see the improved care in patients. Let them see patients begin to testify of what the pharmacies have added to their care. And I think reimbursement will become an issue in, in, in later times. But for now, we can do it. Our own facility in every CHA, we have started and for the glory of God, God is helping us. We hope to get our approval very soon. We have a very good relationship with our doctors there. In fact, when we started running this clinic in diabetic clinic, the head of medicine, the cardiologist asked me, madam, when you are done with this, you were thinking that it's something that I was going to do for a period of time. That can I also come to cardiologist to continue running this kind of services? I think we can blow our trumpets. I think we can do it. Let's come out from that inertia. Let's put the money aside for now. Let's carry the profession forward. I want to sincerely appreciate you once more, Professor Azuka Oparah. But I want to let us know that we can do it. If you want to have a practical experience.
Excellent. Excellent. You know, I was talking about champions. We already have a champion. So uh, Comfort, thank you so much. And I believe your model will find a way to replicate it. I hope you are documenting what you are doing.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, please, you have to document it so that we can have a report that others can share to learn from you. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. So Suleman Abubakar, you can now have your, have the floor.
Uh, good, good evening, my Prof. Thank you very much for mentoring us. Way. Good evening, my colleagues. Uh, I want to tell us that as a pharmacist, that we have a, a knowledge I've been passed through the school, what we need now is to be practicing. Uh, since I qualified in two thousand and eight, what I try to do is make sure I practice. And I think that is what we are lacking, uh, in this, our, I mean, as in, in our practice. Major of what has the, the, we, we, we are qualified, but we find it difficult to start practicing. How do we go about this practices? First of all, identify special areas. Choose cardiologist departments, work hand in hand with the cardiology physicians. Identify any patients in your hospital. Either they invite you to start or not, this is how you go about it. Um, your, your staff, move around and pick the patient, uh, provides, I mean, pick, pick any patient that has a multiple drugs therapy in their folders. They invite them to your office. When you invite them to your office, you cannot do medication therapy provides. By time, all the thing they propose just align, and, 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 and elected for us, you cannot put in the practice. That's what I did since two thousand and eight, and I have several documents on that. And based on that, physicians are getting more, I mean, more confidence in me. That some of them have to invite me to their offices and, uh, uh, let me have involved in their medication of the patients. So what I'm trying to say is that we all, as, the difference between us as a, uh, as a clinical pharmacist and those, uh, the doctors, is that we in pharmacies, we are not actually practicing. And that is our problem. We must move out. We must identify patient. Nobody will give you that opportunity unless you move out to yourself. So what I'm saying is that we should identify a special area. You can choose, uh, uh, diabetes, work and, and with the end of knowledge, if you have endocrinologists specialists in your place. If you don't have, you can, um, you can start. By the time you are doing that, you, you will be seeing on daily basis the evidence-based practice that you will now be using. And that will enable you to read more about any, uh, special area that you choose for yourself. And by the time you choose, um, let's say you have, you, you choose a diabetic patient today, you monitor is a drug, uh, uh, therapy. And by the time you monitor the drug therapy, you identify drug therapy. Then we can, you can read more. By the time you read more, you intervene on the patient behalf, you go and meet the physicians. You discuss with the physicians, you and the physicians have started having a rapport. And that physician will now be getting to you. From there, you, you, uh, you, 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 you be working hand in hand with that person. And all this, uh, 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 this dichotomy between doctor or whatever will be eliminated from time to time. And you will get in the, they will be accepting you and you will be working together for the goal of therapy of the patient. And the patient will be getting better. That's what we should do. We should try to, uh, leave our comfort system and started moving into where we can be practicing. And by the time we are doing that practice, that's exactly what, where we will be recognized. Thank you very much. Let me give you a.
Thank you.
I didn't see any person. I didn't see any person to work on today. I walked with a, a physician of, hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Hello, sir. Hello, sir. Can we, can we move on, please? Can we move on?
Okay. Yes, what I'm saying is that.
We can take your details later, please. We only have nine minutes to go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Please, thank you for the contributors. We appreciate everyone. You have made wonderful contribution, but you know, we, we are, we are time limited. Well, we just have about, uh, nine minutes to end the, uh, the, the presentation and the session. We can only take one more comment and that will come from those that raise their hands. Uh, talking about Maureen Wafer, please, in, in two seconds, please. Maureen, are you there?
I'm here.
Please, two seconds.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad that I'm here this evening to listen to our honorable professor Azuka Oparah. I'm so glad. I want to speak on anticoagulation management. He mentioned it when he was making his presentation. We pharmacists will have a crucial role to pray, to play on this, uh, anticoagulation management. He said something about those who had a atrial fibrillation, who are on warfarin. Those people can take it for few months. Once they are ECGs, okay, there's trouble. Those who are on metacalhar valve, take this warfarin throughout their lifetime. Then there is need for pharmacies on this, uh, medication therapy management. So include all of us, let us delve into this is the key, is where pharmacists are heading to. That's the only way we can help our patients in making their medication. My question is this to Prof, please. I'm glad to see your second edition of Essentials of Pharmacy School Care. Please, Prof, how can we get the copies? Thank you very much.
Okay, Prof, you want to respond to that? Hello? Okay, uh, I want to say that I'm sure the, 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 the books will be in the bookshops.
Bro, please hand it over, Mr. Sir. No, hand it over, Mr. Sir.
Sorry. I was talking about, uh, the use of a warfarin. Yeah, she talked about those who use warfarin for a short time and those on valve replacement, we have to use it for life. You see, these are some of the, um, practice experiences we really need to put together so that, uh, the information can be shared. And it's only through, you know, forums like this that we can share the information. So thank you, Maureen, for uh, uh, that contribution. I can even tell, you know, this, uh, many of us use, uh, when I will benefit from daily aspirin medication. And who are those that we know? So these are, because that's an antiplatelet, but it's not as potent as having warfarin, which is an anticoagulant. So when do we use aspirin? When do we use warfarin? Or those who lost the tolerate aspirin, what do we give them? Thank you for that, um, uh, contribution.
Okay, thank you very much, Prof. I think we have had.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I was saying, uh, we have had a marathon session and a very useful one at that. I'm not sure anybody here will ever agree to joining these sessions. It's a wonderful thing. Prof, thank you very much. We are proud of pharmacy in Nigeria. And all of us should aspire to be proud, proud pharmacists in Nigeria too. By giving services that add value. That's all about what we are saying. We are really coming to the end of this today. I believe upfront, we'll be having sessions like this that will attract everybody. We have more people outside the gate than those that are inside the hall. That is, that would tell you how important this is to us. I want to welcome, I want to say, uh, thank you to everybody that has contributed. Those that wouldn't be able to comment, I'm sure Prof will make his, uh, presentation available to the Education Committee of CPAN. And through that channel, we can all have it, uh, our, applying to us, our services. So I, I would want to call on one of us to say the closing prayer for this session this night. So that we can start thinking about what we have, what we have had this evening and how to apply them to our services. My final comment is this, us, it is we pharmacists who will make this thing systematic in our practice. It's a learning process and we can chapter this case that we, we give. We can start collecting the material we need. We can start govern, governizing our, our strategies. And thank God we have, um, such persons like Prof who can help with the documents he mentioned. We have Education Committee, we have Evidence Based Committee, we have Standard Committee in the CPAN. This is time for us to start thinking and start working and acting. We'll all get there, like we keep saying. Pharmacy has come to stay. Pharmacy has an honor to show to the world. Thank you very much. May I call on, um, Dr. Fumilayo to say a closing prayer for us? Dr. Fumilayo, are you there still?
Only online.
Let us pray. Let us pray. In Jesus' name. My Lord and our God, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for everything that we have learned. And we pray that you help us to take use of it, to help our patients and help humanity. Father, we commit the prophet to your hand. We pray that you replenish him and strengthen him. And Father Lord, we commit our patience unto your hand. We pray that what is supposed to benefit from us, you, you will give us that, uh, wisdom to apply to them. And as we go to sleep tonight, we pray that send one here to guide us and make us to work into a new day tomorrow in peace. In Jesus' mighty name, we have prayed.
Amen.
Hmm. Amen.
I will now say good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Have a sweet night, best. Night.
Night, sir.
Thank you so much, Prof. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Prof.
Night, sir. Thank you, Prof.
Oh, please, the slide. Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Please, the slide, dude.
Thank you so much, sir.
Can we have some slides?
Yes, you will.
Thank you so much.